Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all of you to our December meeting. This is the last meeting of this year. I hope all of you had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Glad to see those of you that are in attendance on tonight and those that are viewing our meeting. At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We're gonna ask Ms. Amy Cole to give us our pledge and our moment of silence.
Please stand and join me in my pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this meeting tonight, we ask you to help us be productive with the children we serve at the forefront of our minds. Give us insight to lead with integrity and that our decisions reflect what is right and good for all of our children. Help to keep our families and friends safe during this busy time of year and bless all of us with a wonderful holiday season. Amen.
At this time, I will yield this beating over to our superintendent that he will carry out the election for our chairperson.
All right. Are there any nominations for the position of chair for the Pitt County Board of Education?
I nominate Mary Maltsby.
I decline.
I nominate Kelly Weaver.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. Without objection, for the position of chair, Kelly Weaver has been nominated. All in favor of electing Kelly Weaver to the position of chair, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? The majority has elected Kelly Weaver to serve as chair.
Y'all excuse us a moment, we're just moving around.
Are there any nominate, now we will elect the vice chair. Are there any nominations for position of vice chair of the Pitt County Board of Education?
I nominate Mary Maltsby.
Tack.
Okay, are there any further nominations for vice chair? Hearing none and without objection, I'll declare, ooh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I will need to close the nominations, so I hear a motion to close the nominations.
A second?
Hearing, are there any objections? Hearing none, without objection, I declare the nominations closed. For the position of vice chair, Mary Maltsby has been nominated. All in favor of electing Mary to the position of vice chair, please raise your right hand. No opposed? So, the majority has elected Mary to serve as vice chair.
Are you moving again?
Playing musical chairs.
We will, we will shift for the next meeting. Okay, okay.
No, no, not you, not you.
We'll move around a bit.
Yeah. Now we will move to routine business. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I second it.
It's been moved by Amy and seconded by Mary that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, please raise your right hand. Okay, all, everyone agrees? At this time, I will invite Ms. Hope first to present a spotlight on teaching and learning.
Good evening, Chair Weaver. Board members, those that are in attendance and those watching online. We are so excited to celebrate students and educators this evening and we're gonna start off with volleyball. We had quite a season this year, a lot of our schools with volleyball and so we have some superstars here tonight, players as well as an outstanding coach with us. And I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Athletics for Pitt County Schools, Paul Formwell.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's good to see everyone. Tonight, we're gonna recognize a very special group of young ladies. The JH Rose Rampant Volleyball Program, our 6A state champions. And I had an opportunity, Coach, Mr., Dr. Lassner and I were able to go and see the match. And you know, I'll be honest, we had the Wataga, I think is who we played and they had a girl that probably led the state in kills, I think she did. And she was firing away in the first two sets and these young ladies never flinched. You looked over there, you never saw any, any negative body language. They just continued to play hard and turned around and won the next three sets. Probably one of the most impressive volleyball matches I have ever seen. And they represented us all extremely well. And just be extremely proud of them and their efforts in, in bringing home that state championship.
We have a certificate for the team. Coach Medlin, we'll give this to you on behalf of the team. And then you're gonna have to let me know if your, your players' friends are not with us. Anne Price-Duke? I'm gonna hand these to you, Ms. Maltsby. If you'll just stick them there, that'd be great. Caroline Bates? Bates, sorry. Claire Allen? Maggie Jarman? I am not batting a thousand. Francie Taft? Yay, we have one! Taylor Losner? Madison Long? Madison Long? Jericho Lineberger? Maya Swirity? I hope you're in here. Marlee Lawrence? Mia Kendrick?
Thank you. Thank you.
Kate Wallen? Clara Evans? All right, and you're one of the next five. Brianna, join her? Oh, good! See, see. Right, if we could get you to turn around and take a photo with... You in here? And it's not, would you like to stand up one of you? You guys back up a little bit to your close to your board chair, there your board chair. Congratulations, dear.
Okay, and then we have a, we have another very special guest with us. Coach Jennifer Gilligan is the head volleyball coach at DH Conley High School. She had a great monumental accomplishment this year. She recorded her 600th career win as a head volleyball coach. She's been the volleyball, head volleyball coach at Conley since 2000. Overall record of 606 and 83, that's an 88% winning percentage. She's been to the Eastern Regionals 14 times, winning six Eastern Regional titles. She's had six state championship appearances with two titles. One in 2007 and one in 2021. 18 conference championships. 14 Conference Coach of the Year awards. And just selected this year the 2025 North Carol, North Carolina Volleyball Coach Association 7A Coach of the Year. And then she's also been selected by the North Carolina Volleyball Coaches Association to coach in the Senior All-Star East-West Match this Saturday. So, we're very excited about her and I'll tell you, as a coach, a fellow coach in Pitt County for many years, I've had a chance to watch her from afar and see her accomplishments. And one thing you always notice about great coaches are, no matter the talent level is up and down, it's always great to coach really good players. But when you're consistent regardless, that shows that you're developing those players and you're developing people. It's more than just athletics and she does a great job of that. It's very obvious with her program and how they conduct themselves. So, we're very honored to recognize her tonight on her award and her 600th career win.
Jennifer, we're so proud of you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir.
But, you know, that long list of accomplishments that shows your dedication, your love for the team and you like and love what you do. And you're, like you said, being consistent is so important. And on behalf of the board, we're so proud of you for your dedication. Because I know that it's taken a lot of your personal time that you've given up to a conference year. And thank you so much.
Ms. Gilligan, what time do you have volleyball practice with your girls?
Sometimes we practice in the morning before school starts and sometimes we practice in the afternoon. Just depends on what our schedule calls us to do.
When she has those early morning practices, then she goes to Winter Grade Intermediate and is an extraordinary PE teacher. And so, had a chance to work with her and she's just an incredible teacher and human. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's all for you, sir. Unless you wanna do science? Next, we have an incredible science teacher. We have Patrilla Hardy from Lake Forest Elementary School. She is escorted by her principal, Mr. Perkins, tonight. And she was named the North Carolina Science Teachers Association 2025 District 1 Outstanding Elementary Science Teacher of the Year. And we are so incredibly proud of you for representing Pitt County Schools and doing all the great things at Lake Forest and to get rec, recognized on the state level. Congratulations. You want to say anything?
I'm super happy to be here. I'm super happy to be able to represent Lake Forest and my amazing classmates and teammates. And I'm just happy to be able to represent the county.
Thank you.
Outstanding science teacher and just that is amazing. And I know you're very proud of that because it's one thing to have a love of teaching but to actually be recognized for that as well and offering even the classroom with a way to put production.
Sir, we have to get you in the photo. Here, I'll take your photo. Next, we invite Ms. Julie Simpson, who is our Director of Digital Learning and Media. Ms. Julie Simpson is new to our district and we're thrilled to have her here. She is with Ms. Bealow from Hope Middle School and Principal Ms. Johnston, come on in. Excellent, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Simpson to tell you about the renovation. It's actually a West grant. Perkins, Weston Wells have the same selection committee and many times they'll bring in all the applications and then one of the three will give the grant. So, this was actually a West grant.
So, back in April, Ms. Bealow, with the support of Ms. Johnston, applied for this grant. They received $56,838 to update the media center. The focus was on a more modern kind of library, really looking at that circulation desk so that they could support students better and really looking to create a student-friendly space. The renovations were completed in mid-October and so this is what the, the media center looks like now. And we're very excited that the students have already been able to benefit from these updates.
One of all three of you come up? We've got, we've only got one plaque. But I had the opportunity of, I don't know, three weeks ago, coming to the media center there at Hope Middle School and it looks fabulous. And y'all do an outstanding job there. And Ms. Johnston, you got a wonderful staff. And, and everybody works together good. They, they, I, I intentionally didn't put my They, they, I intentionally didn't put my little Pitt County thing on just to see how I would be treated there. You know, I do that once in a while. And y'all, I'm gonna tell you what's true. I was treated like royalty. Do you do loyal visitors that way?
Trying to do it.
All right, that's very good. Good answer. The Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes Hope Middle School Media Center for Creating Excellence in the East, presented on December the 1st, 2025. Well-deserved, a tremendous accomplishment, a wonderful school, and a beautiful, beautiful community. Thank you very much.
Next, we are going to spotlight Belvoir Elementary School. If you've not been to that school recently, there is good energy there. They have wonderful festivals. They have outstanding educators. And they have recently been given two awards. They received a Teacher Creative Materials Award and Global Leaders Career Development Award from Participate Learning. And I would love it, Ms. Ingram, if you would come to say a couple of words... Oh, read your face. She's like, no. Well, would you like to say just a couple of words about your wonderful staff and the awards that you got for your school?
Hello, everyone. Today, we have members of our global committee, and we have our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lisa Monte, and TA, TA Assistant of the, not TA, Teacher Assistant of the Year, Jasmine Herron here. And I am so proud of our staff. They have worked hard this year and the previous years over just increasing student engagement, increasing our proficiency, increasing learning and improving their teaching over the years. So the recognition that we have received this year has been a surprise, and we are grateful for the recognition that we are receiving. And it shows the hard work that they are doing every day. Great things are happening north of the river, and we're not gonna let up off the gas. We're gonna keep going and keep moving and keep soaring.
Congratulations to all of you on behalf of our board. We're so proud of what you're doing there in Belvoir. North of the river is shining bright. And we thank you for what you do. I want to call you doctor. You have a few months. A few months, all right. Thank you again, and congratulations to all of you for outstanding, outstanding service. A wonderful community, great community.
Of course.
The Belvoir community. Beautiful. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am, you can tell who everybody is, because I don't know everybody.
So here with me today, we have Lisa Monte. She's our third grade dual-language teacher. Maria Iskierdo, she's dual-language first grade, third grade. Mara Guerrero in kindergarten dual-language. Our instructional coach, Jessica Kerewyn. Robin Sangio, she's our ESL teacher. Jenny Goodwin is our school counselor. Ms. Herron is our TA. And we have Dariella Tercios in second grade dual-language. We have Nicole Ann Hamilton, fifth grade, and Chevelle Francis, fifth grade, and Mr. Myers is our assistant principal.
Put the taller friends in the back. Pitt County Schools and our Board of Education did an outstanding job at our recent North Carolina School Board Association Conference. We are excited to have some friends that are excellent artists. Come on in, guys. Come stand right there. Hey, for the poster winners, we're so thrilled to be here. Oh, yes, okay. Which one of you is Derek? Are you Derek? Can you hold it like this, buddy, so they can take a look at your artwork? Oh, excellent. Okay. So for the K-2 Division, we have our friend Derek McCasky. Does I say that correctly? All right. He's in second grade, and he got second place, and we're so excited about that. And the whole state of North Carolina, give it up for him. And our 3-5 Division, we have Jacorian. Does I say that right? Jacorian, okay. Jacorian A. Anderson, he is a fourth grader, and he got third place in the whole state of North Carolina. They have their art teacher here with them tonight. Let's give it up for the art teacher. Principal Roundtree somewhere. Come on in. Come on. Yes. Awesome. Are you excited to win an award for the state? Isn't that cool? And you even had your artwork framed in the hallway. I don't know if you noticed it, but when you came in, Mr. Knight put it up, our arts coordinator, he put it up there for you so you could be famous when you walked in the Board of Education today.
And here's some additional things. This is so heavy. There must be something very important in there, and that's the ribbon, right? And Derek, what do you love most about art? How does it make you feel when you do art? Makes you feel good? What's your favorite color? Blue. Love it. And we are so proud of you, and keep doing art, please do. Because you know what? Art tells stories, and we need people to tell all kinds of good stories with art, okay? All right. And where's my other one?
Here's your other bag. That was heavy.
I'm so sorry. And Jacorian? Jacorian, another big, heavy bag. Now, what do you love to do most about art?
To be creative.
To be creative. That is amazing. And what is your favorite color?
You like red.
I like red, too. Keep telling those stories, Jacorian. We're very proud of you both. And here is your ribbon as well. Congratulations. You carry all of this. How about another? Put your ribbon in there, buddy. We are gonna get a picture with all of you. Is that okay if we get pictures with you?
All right, if you'll kind of back up just a little bit. We're gonna put your gift bag in front. You gotta hold on to it. We can even do this. Watch. Two little fingers right there. Got it? All right, buddy. Right here. Got it? Art teacher and a special, excuse me, a special... And Principal Roundtree. And we really thank Mr. Russell Knight, our arts coordinator, because if we don't get art at the association, we can't have kids win. So we have to have them enter artwork, and so we're thrilled to be represented this year. This is perfect. And our board received three additional awards, and I'm just gonna talk about those three awards quickly. We are so incredibly proud of our awesome, awesome Carol Rankin. Carol is the glue of Pitt County schools. She keeps this building working. She is the Administrative Assistant to the Board of Education and to our Superintendent, Ms. Dr. Lassiter. She received her graduate renewal of 500-plus training hours. Carol was only one of five in the whole state of North Carolina to receive this incredible distinction. So we are so proud of you, Carol, and I hope you will stand up and receive your award. Can we get a photo with this? Come on, with Chair Weaver. Be careful.
I'm gonna see the light photos.
Dr. Lassiter, come.
Oh, okay.
Yes. The Silver Bell Award recognizes boards where every member actively works towards meeting their 12 hours of training between July 1st and July, and June 30th, I'm sorry, between July 1st and June 30th. So all of you collectively earned the Silver Award. So we're gonna get a picture in just a second, but next, I have to tell you a little bit about the next award. Lastly, we're thrilled to announce that our Board of Education received an Innovation and Excellence in Public Education Award. Our board exemplifies innovation, community-centered leadership, and a deep commitment to student success. Through initiatives such as PCS Engage, The Road Ahead, the board has strengthened partnerships with families, our schools, and our community organizations. Their support with programs like Summer Feeding, Back-to-School Events. Two of our board members hosted them at their own churches, Battle of the Books, FFA Scholarships. That demonstrates holistic investment in both student well-being and academic enrichment. By participating in attendance area listening sessions, you remain visible at community events. Every board member stays closely connected with their school community and the communities that they serve. You help with the evolving needs of our students and our staff. Your visionary leadership continues to cultivate a culture of equity, excellence, and shared responsibility across Pitt County schools. And I will tell you, we go to different conferences, and we talk to people in other districts. And I know this is online, but I would put you up against any other board in the state of North Carolina. We are so blessed to have you serve our schools, and thank you for being present and not just being here the first Monday of the month and the third Monday of the month. As you said, Mr. Forrest, you go into schools, you visit, you talk to your teachers, you talk to students. You engage with them here at the board meetings, and that doesn't happen everywhere. And you are very collegial with each other. You're kind to each other, and you do what's best for children because you know that's bigger than you are. So thank you for all that you do for our school system. We thank you, and you are so deserving of this Excellence in Education Award. So if you'll come forward, all of you, we're gonna get all of you in a picture. Right there by the, that would be great. I have to move the chairs. Thank you. This is our social media room.
Justin, you with the bookend.
And before you take a sit, Bishop Tripp, we also would like to honor you and to express our appreciation. You have led through transitions and led us through a good year, a lot of growth, and I hope that you will continue to serve, but well together. Thank you for setting us up for success in the past year. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Glad you gave it. Wait, where is it?
That's nice.
Okay. As of 6:15 tonight, we have two individuals and one group who have registered for public expression this evening. At this time, I recognize Vice Chair Maltzby to provide us with some reminders regarding our rules governing public expression.
Thank you, Chairman Weaver. This evening, we have two individuals and one group offering public expression. Public expression is an opportunity to share issues of concern that are relevant to the business of the board. The board will listen to your comments respectfully, and our chair may offer some direction if our rules are not followed. But the board will not respond to your comments. Only speakers who have signed up for the public expression may address the board. When a speaker's time expires, you must end your remarks and step away from the podium. If a speaker is not present when his or her name is called, the opportunity to speak will be considered waived. During this time period, you may hear someone share a viewpoint with the board that you do not agree with. We do not censor speech by viewpoint, and we do not permit our audience to express approval or disapproval for a viewpoint expressed. This time is for the individual speaking to address the full board. The board does not permit speakers to name a staff member or student when offering praise or criticism. We also do not permit comments that are irrelevant, irrelevant to our business, which includes attack on individuals or something in their personal lives or the discussion of board members, family members. Again, the board members will listen to your comments respectfully, and our chair may offer some direction if our rules are not followed, but we will not respond to your comments. At this time, we will hear from our first speaker, Tricia Worahan. And if I misspell your pronounced name, forgive me my heart.
I just forgot.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, friends. I'm here tonight to talk to you, just continuing my theme of what you guys discussed tonight, the things that the district is doing well. I drop in on other board meetings across the state, actually, and I can tell you, you guys are, as much as it can be difficult to say, really innovators in this state with what we are looking at, with what we are dealing with here. And I am grateful for that. I am genuinely grateful for the diversity we have on this board. I am grateful that even when you guys have to make decisions, they are not easy decisions always, and that is something I appreciate because it's meaningful to know that it weighs on you. And I'm coming to you guys tonight because we are innovators in this state. However, as you know, I'm north of the river. I love living up there. It's very dear to my heart. And we are very close to Edgecombe County. And I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but Edgecombe County has fallen behind in economic times. They are roughly like 24% of economic growth has just dropped off. Like, they are backwards in how things are going. And where I'm at in Bethel, like, we're a hop, skip, and jump from Edgecombe County line. And I just wanted to come up to you guys and say for, yes, the district is doing amazing things. And I've been to schools that are doing amazing things. We have people that have heard me go on about the amazing things happening at the schools in the district that I would love to see happening at other schools in the district, too. I would love to brainstorm ways to bring some of those things that are happening to other schools, too. We're just, we're not there yet. We're getting there. I've been here two years next month, and I've seen dramatic changes in the two years I've been here. And so I know that they can happen, and I know that sometimes it takes trailblazers to get us there. And I just, I gotta say, although, trailblazers are kind of tired. It is exhausting, weed whacking through to get through to some of y'all. Like, it has been... Like, it has been a challenge on everyone's end sometimes, trying to get to the innovative points that we're trying to get to, to support all of these children, every single one of these kids we want to support. And I know we are trying to get there, and everyone's hearts are in the right place for that. And so, that is why I do show up every month, and I do give you guys my .1 cents because it's not listened, it's, you know, just provided. And I am grateful for that opportunity. And like I said, and I'm going to end with, I am grateful for the Board that we have in front of us. Have happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Rosa Rueda with three minutes.
I appreciate your time and attention as I share something close to my heart, not for sympathy, but for context. As a teen, I, like many of us here, couldn't imagine wanting to end up like my mom. But adulthood has a funny way of changing your perspective. Now I know that her resilience and courage are exactly the traits that I want to pass to my children. You see, my mom contracted polio as a child and lived with partial paralysis ever since, but that has never defined her. My mom always stressed the importance of education and a strong work ethic, and she lived it. Growing up, I watched as she navigated the challenges of applying for citizenship. She never shared those struggles, but I saw the pressure, and I worried about what would happen if she wasn't approved. One night in high school, that worry came up as a vivid dream. We were going into a store when officers appeared and began to take my mom away. I begged them not to take her. I woke up in a panic and crying. Then, I got ready, got on the bus, and went to school like normal. But I carried that worry all day. I was afraid of speaking it into existence, so I never shared it with anyone until today because I realized that so many of our students now sit in their classrooms unable to learn properly because they have that same worry, for themselves and for their parents. For me, it was just a bad dream, but for them, it's a real possibility. While no enforcement activity has been officially confirmed in Pitt County, the concern is already here. Advocates for Hispanic students here in Pitt County have shared that families are already hesitant to send their children to school. We are hearing that attendance among our Hispanic students is being affected, and staff are concerned about what students lose when they don't show up. They don't just lose class time. They lose access to vital meals, support, and the adults who notice when something is wrong. I understand that this is a sensitive issue and that it may draw criticism, but leadership means doing what's right for students even when it's uncomfortable. For our students, this isn't a political issue, it's an educational one and a personal one. We can't forget that the North Carolina Constitution established the right to an education, and in 1982, Plyler v. Doe affirmed that this applies to every child regardless of immigration status. Every child. In January, NCDPI issued guidance reminding districts of their legal obligations and encouraging boards to review policies and practices to ensure they support every student and family. While it's true that you don't control immigration policy, you do control how our school district prepares and responds, so I'm asking you to do what strong boards like this one do best. Prepare before you are forced to react. Thank you.
And our last speaker will be Mario Blancher, and he has five minutes.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Lassiter, and the public. As President of the largest educator organization in the county, the Pitt County Association of Educators, I represent educators on different committees in the county. I advocate for and try my best to guide educators who are in tough situations, and I'm a spokesperson for what is right in our public schools. This evening, I'm here to bring attention to a couple things, a couple things to the public's attention. The first is curriculum. To let the public know, the building staff does not decide what standards are taught in the classroom. As a classroom teacher, I can assure you, I can assure you that teachers spend quite a bit of focus time working on what we teach and how we go about getting our students to learn what we need them to know. We spend time coming up with strategies to reach our students who have not performed to where we would like them to be. Our class standards or specific topics that we will cover, that we cover in the classroom are public knowledge, and folks can look those up. The Department of Public Instruction is the governing organization of all things curriculum for the state, so if folks have problems, they can start there. The website is dpi.nc.gov for reference, so they can look that up. All right, the second thing is more near and dear to my heart, and that is the calendar. Yeah, sorry. The reason why this is such a big deal to me is time. I would like to have a common sense calendar, and I'm sure you all would like to have a common sense calendar, that will take advantage of all the natural breaks that we have in the year, so our students and staff do not feel overworked for long stretches of the school year. Making our school calendars in accordance with state law adds unnecessary stress for our children when we go as long as seven or eight weeks without a break of some sort. That is self-sabotage, and we're setting our children up to fail by doing things like that. The university system we have in this country is considered the best in the world, and our colleges and universities provide frequent breaks in their calendar. The public school system should be allowed to do what is best for our students, and for whatever reason, our General Assembly will allow us to do what is right for our students by allowing us to choose our own calendar. So, my suggestion to improve things, especially the calendar, is to contact our members of the General Assembly and let them know how we feel about the calendar or other issues. It should be a sustained effort because doing nothing is not going to change anything, and if we want things to improve, we will have to work together to make sure we continue to sustain the mission of public education. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our people and groups that have shared with us tonight. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda. The following items have been listed on our consent agenda for approval this evening. Minutes from the November 3rd, 2025 Board Meeting, November 17th, 2025 Boardwork Session, November 7th, 2025 Closed Session, a five-year service and support continuation of Cloud 12 Camera Systems, 2025-2026 County Capital Budget Requests, a Contract for Trash Collection with GFL, and the Personnel Report for December 1st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve these items?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. It's been moved by Worth and seconded by Mary to approve the items on the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Everyone has its creed unanimously. Emma, now I'm gonna recognize Emma Hodson, our Board Attorney, who will present a proposed update for Policy 2310 that was requested at our last meeting by Bishop Tripp, our new business.
Good evening, Board members. According to your request, we have updated, proposed some updates, or some updates were proposed to Policy 2310, the first of which is very simple, just taking some outdated language from the day when there were 12 of you, from 15 to 12 copies. We've always had that or addressed that administratively since it's now just 12 people at the table. As well as, for the sake of consistency, for streamlining purposes, just having all speakers, whether they represent a group or are speaking for themselves, offer three minutes of public expression. And then, some, just some clarifying around spokespersons. Those are the proposed updates to the policy. I don't know if anyone has questions for me at this time. This would be for, this is just for first reading. Happy to address any other questions, queries you may have as well over time.
Are there any questions? Yes, sorry.
So, what you're saying, with the changes up there, all speakers will have three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Does not matter whether they represent a group or just an individual?
Is there any objection, any more questions?
I think I have one.
Okay, yes, Sergeant Edgy.
This, this policy change, will it affect how we bring something to the superintendent's attention, let's say? I'm using your phone as an example, but you're a good man. Would it, if we bring something to the superintendent's attention after a speaker speaks, and that that we bring to the superintendent's attention is germane to what the speaker said, I don't want us in the future to say, you're not supposed to respond to a speaker. So, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that that's clear because I could see in the future that that could be a possibility.
I understand, I think I understand what you're asking, sir. No, that is not what is, that is not the change.
Okay, I just wanna get that up front with all the world to hear. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, um, let's see. Is there any objection to including the second reading and approval of this policy as part of the consent agenda for our January 5th, 2026 meeting? Any objection? Okay, we'll include that. Thank you, Ms. Hodson. At this time, we will have our closing comments. Following Dr. Lassiter's closing comments, I'll call on individual Board members around the table, and we'll each have your three minutes. I now recognize you, Dr. Lassiter.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna say, I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving, a great holiday, where you were able to spend time with your loved ones or just simply spend time to reflect on life itself. I was able to spend time with my folks and absolutely enjoyed. I wanna say congratulations to our Board on their recognition and hard work. You know, I think awards and recognitions, when someone can read about you on paper and make a selection, it says a lot about you as a group. And so, I'm proud and honored to serve with all of you, and you all do a great job, and I wouldn't wanna work with anyone else except all of you, so I'm grateful and excited about it. I'm excited to share with the public that after discussion with our Board, we're gonna be back on the road for our Listening Tour in 2026. So, at our next work session, I will share those dates and times with our Board, and then we'll announce them at the January meeting, and we are so excited to be back on the road, and I think we're calling it "On the Road" again, so we're looking forward to that. So, we'll be going around to attendance areas. We've secured our locations and our dates and times, and we look forward to engaging with the community, sharing where we are as a school district, where we're going, and where you desire for us to go, if you'll come along with us on the journey. So, we're excited about that. And I believe she's in the corner, Ms. Renee Dunn, if you'll stand up for me, please. So, I want to acknowledge our interim Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Renee Dunn, who has worked for Pitt County Schools for 14 years. So, we're glad to have her with us, and I'll tell you, in the past week or so, she has handled things like a pro already. You know, I'll ask her a question, and she'll say, oh, that's just, you know, and she'll run the report. She's fantastic. She's done a great job. She's meshing well with our senior staff team. So, thank you, Ms. Dunn, for stepping up in the role of our interim Chief Financial Officer, so we appreciate her. And I believe, is that our State Representative back there?
Yes.
So, thank you. It's good to see you here this evening. And Madam Chair, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Lassiter. We're gonna go around our several topics. We're gonna start with Bishop Tripp.
Wonderful, wonderful. Congratulations to you, Kelly, and to Mary. We look forward to having a successful year, working together as a Board. I think it's very outstanding that when I go to different workshops and places, they want to know what we're doing in Pitt County that works, and I tell them that we work together. And some of them cannot believe how well we work together, and they talk about Pitt County in a good way, and I want you to know that you have my support in making sure that this be a successful year for all of us, all of our students and staff. Also, congratulations to Principal Ingram again at the Bellwood School for all that they're doing there. I congratulate all those who were received recognition on tonight. I would like to, at this time, apologize to Principal Ambrose at Stoke School. My busy schedule, I forgot this morning preparing breakfast for a family member at home that I was to be at the school for the grad graduation as the guest speaker.
Oh, no.
And I calmly apologize to the principal, to the students, to the deputy, that I didn't make it this morning, but I'm still in good standards with them, and so they're giving me another chance. And thank you all for working with me this past year as Chair. It has been awesome. I enjoy each and every one of you and look forward to continue working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you too, Dr. Lassiter.
Jennifer, I didn't see Representative Brown out there, so thank you for your continued support. We really appreciate that. I want to, congratulations to Carol because she is amazing, and we couldn't do what we do without having somebody like Carol beside us, behind us, around us. So, thank you. Congratulations. And then, thank you to Dr. Lassiter for writing all the nominations because without your recognition and the effort that it took to put those in, this wouldn't have happened. So, I want to also talk about what happens behind the curtain, right? So, thank you for that support. I want to acknowledge Jada Harrison, who is a student at South Central High School. She was selected to be on the State Superintendent Student Advisory Council. It is a really big deal. It is about 11th and 12th graders, and they advise state education leaders on topics that affect our public school students. So, we are very, very honored and proud of Ms. Harrison and look forward to hearing her and love to have her come and just report what she's learning, because that would be great. Also, another shout-out to South Central. They have increased the number of students taking AP exams by 189%. It has, and increased proficiency by 427%. That is no small feat. Any principal and team knows how hard that is, and I am so proud of our principal leaders, many of them here today, taking time from their families to be here to support the work and continue the hard work. So, all grades, all students, all matter. Thank you. Also, Dr. Cecil, for an amazing Title I event that was all about reading. I don't think I've seen a more well-executed event. It was at South Central. They had all these stations. We had WH Robbins and Students, Creekside, AG Cox. It was phenomenal, and it was all about reading. And so, so incredibly proud of all of our senior leaders who were there. Dr. Matheson was one of the first faces I got to see walking down the hallway, but just everybody. Sarah English was there with one of the tables, and just really proud of how we're out in the community and all the hard work that happens. So, just excited, good time.
Amy.
I'm gonna say, congratulations to Carol and all of our award winners tonight, the Jade Rose volleyball, the Conley Coach for getting her recognition, and then, of course, you know, all the, how do I wanna say this? I appreciate with all of our public expression people coming out here, I just wanted to say that without getting into too much detail, but also, you know, with the Listening Tours, I'm really excited about that. That's one of my, that was one of my favorite things last year, because it allows us the opportunity to visit each district as well when we may not be able to get to every district. For those of us that were there, most of us were present at just about all of them, and it gives us a chance to engage with communities that are different from ours and to see and to talk to people, and I thought it was a great experience, and I'm really excited about doing that again. I hope that more people will come and hear about it since this is not our first go-around, and maybe we'll have some more participation from parents. We had a lot of educators, we had a lot of principals, teachers, but unfortunately, I think just because of the, maybe the lack of press on it, give or take, we didn't have as much parent participation. I'm hoping for a lot more of that this time around. So, talk to your families and friends and let them know what's going on, because if they want to get involved, they wanna hear how their voice heard, it's the best way to do that. And make sure that when we say, do they have any questions, you know, you ask your questions because it gets really quiet when we ask that, and nobody says anything. So, that's your chance to ask questions, and it's a really great experience, and you can talk to people after the fact. So, I really enjoyed that part, so I'm really excited about that, if you can't tell. But I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving and was able to spend time with family and friends, and as we get into this busy end of the, end of the season with, especially for our high school students who are taking exams, and just be with them as they go through this time. It can always be a scary thing, and I know some of them take exams after Christmas, but there are some classes that finish before Christmas, and you know, it just depends on what they're doing, what they're taking, but they're taking CCP classes, and they're definitely taking exams before Christmas. So, just be with them. But if they're taking CCP classes, then they're definitely taking exams before Christmas, so, um, just be with them and with their families. And I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season. That's it for me.
Where?
Well, I want to congratulate you, Kelly. Um, and Mary, I also want to congratulate you. I committed to you three, several months ago that I was going to vote for you. And, you know, I was not going to let anyone talk me out of it, no political party or anyone. And, um, I stood by what I said. Uh, I'm also the pastor at Freedom Baptist Church, and, uh, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, um, we gave away a hundred and fifty meals to families within that attendance area. They got a, uh, thirteen-pound turkey, they got all the, uh, ingredients that come with it and for them to prepare. Uh, all of that was free. And we just felt that was one way we could give back to the community within that area. Because I know there's a lot of people that this year's tough for. Um, and Carol, congratulations to you. I mean, there's not enough that this whole board could say good about you because you really remind us of things, especially me. Uh, you do remind, you do know you got. And, um, I just appreciate you. I think you do a wonderful job. And, uh, there's no one that can replace you. We can hire somebody else for something, but you are really outstanding person. Not only work ethic, but also as a good Christian lady, and I appreciate that. Um, let's see, congratulations to Hope Middle School getting that grant. I know how important that is when you have a media center that is not up to par. And then, you know, kids are not as excited when they go in there, but when you can get a grant, especially they got one over, I think, fifty thousand dollars, uh, to rework it and revamp it. Uh, kids become a whole lot more interested in it, and they are proud to go in there also. Um, and then that outstanding science teacher, that tells you that, um, Petrella Hardy, that tells you that we've got great people on our staff that are promoting excellence in education. And, uh, and then, of course, I want to congratulate the Rose High Football, I mean, the Rose High, uh, volleyball and Jennifer from D H Conley.
Thank you, Mark. Benji.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Chairman. First of all, I'm like, uh, I'm like Dr. Lassiter, when I see a elected official in the audience, I, I thank you for being here. She helps us get the money.
She does.
So we appreciate everything that you do for us. Um, Carol, they've only given me three minutes. And three minutes won't do justice to everything that you do for this Board of Education. And it doesn't do it justice for the people in this room tonight, because I know every single one of them appreciate everything that you do. And what you do for Pitt County Schools, we just can't say enough about how you are the glue in a lot of ways. That makes, I think I heard, uh, at, at some point tonight, congenial. And this board is congenial, we might have, uh, difference of opinion on matters, and that's good. But what, what you do is, y- y- you, you make it so that we're all together as a Board of Education. That's how you win those awards. It's not necessarily because one member or two members are outstanding, it's because of the entirety of that board has chosen that we put our differences aside so that we do those things that are the best for the children of Pitt County. It means a whole lot to me, Carol. I told you I didn't have enough time.
Don't waste it on me.
I, I'm not, but I just want to say this, you know, I do a little preaching from time to time.
Yes, sir.
And that's just point one, you usually have three points. I'll save the other two for later.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I didn't mean for you to cry.
Me either.
Good news travels fast. I don't know how many people I've had from Parker's Chapel to call me and tell me, man, we got it, we're excited that Renee now is our interim finance officer. And I'm excited too, Renee, you'll do a wonderful job, you, you've done a tremendous job in the shadows. And now it's just a little bit more exposed. And that's, that's, that's wonderful, and the people of Parker's Chapel and north of the river in the Pactola's area are very excited for you. So I appreciate that so much. Um, Kelly, congratulations to you, look forward to working with you this year. Mary, I, uh, I committed to you a year ago, and I told you that, uh, I was going to support you. And, um, I really hold high when I tell somebody something I'm going to do it, and I did. And I'm, I did it one bit, you'll be good for us. But I really appreciate when people tell you something, they, they fulfill themselves. And, uh, you know, Merry Christmas, and I look forward to working with you again next year.
Thank you, Benji.
Um, so just to start out, uh, repeating all the congratulations, uh, J H Rose, uh, being the state champions, wow! Um, so much to celebrate, uh, our volleyball coach of the year, Jennifer Gilligan, Gilligan. Um, the awards for, uh, our science teachers, uh, these amazing grants. Um, all of this, uh, just really makes us all proud, and I, I'm so happy that our meetings always start with, with these celebrations. Uh, I also wanted to thank our outgoing chair and vice chair, Mr. Tripp and Mr. Forbes. It has been, uh, a pleasure having you guys lead us, and, uh, I'm grateful for your service. And I want to congratulate our new chair and vice chair, Ms. Weaver and Ms. Maltese B. Um, after working with both of you the last year, I know you're going to steer the ship, uh, with integrity and wisdom, so I'm excited for that. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I am wrapping up my very first year on this school board. Uh, it has been a whirlwind, so much new information, some challenges, some successes. Uh, and I really have enjoyed every minute of it. Uh, I am so grateful for this opportunity to serve, and I very much look forward to the next three years working with all of you. I hope, we'll see. Um, thank you, uh, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Linda. And Vice Chair Maltese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, congratulations to Rose High School for winning the state three A title. And a congratulation to all who was, who were recognized this evening. Carol Rankins? A special congratulation to you. As Benji just say- said, you are the glue that holds us together, and we thank you for that, we appreciate you. So we know we're telling the truth because we're saying the same thing, you didn't know what I had written down. To all my colleagues, it's a blessing to work alongside you. Benji?
And tears are coming. Years ago, two years ago, you nominated me to be a part of this amazing board. And tonight, you nominated me again, twice. Thank you for having that trust in me, I appreciate that. Uh, that means a lot coming from a colleague of such high standing, Benji. We know Benji is, has been on this board for a long time, and I appreciate for all that you see in me. Thank you, Benji.
Gloria Steen Brown, happy belated birthday. We are so glad to have you here with us this evening. Again, I am honored to represent the Pitt County Board of Education as co-chairman. I promise you that I will continue to serve our students, our teachers, our community, our staff, alongside with Dr. Lassiter and our chairman, Ms. Weaver. I promise you that I will work closely with our chairman and with all our board members. Again, thank you for believing in me. Again, Dr. Lassiter, thank you for your leadership. You thought I left you out, didn't you? Benji? We appreciate your leadership, you really have done an amazing job. Um, you were worth working with Dr. Lassiter on his first year as full superintendent, even though, you know, we know you had a little inch in there before. But the two of you working alongside with him, I'm sure made a smooth ride for him. And for that, thank you for being there and supporting him through this as you were our leaders. So again, thank you, it's wonderful to be a part of Pitt County Board of Education. I never had that people me before.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I want to second what Mary said as well. I, it's an honor to be part of this board, um, to serve our students and our educators, um, and to work with this team, um, our, uh, central office team, um, and this board. Um, so thank you also for believing in me and for being willing to work with me. Um, and, uh, and I, I believe, I believe in us, I think that this team is going to do, um, some really great things this year. Um, it's going to be a really good year. Um, I, I am thinking about all of the work that, um, our schools and our students, uh, all that, that's celebrated statewide that we talked about tonight, whether it's in the arts, um, in STEM, um, as a student on the advisory council for the superintendent. Um, and, uh, all levels of our district are, are celebrated in our notice at the state level from the board, um, all the way down to our students, um, and everything in between. And I think that is absolutely something to celebrate. Um, and ta- and it gives us something to really continue to work for, right, and continuing to lift up our students. Um, I want to make sure that we also, um, recognize Bishop Tripp. He was sworn in as a, a board of direct, for the board of directors at the North Carolina State, um, School Board Association, and we were there la- uh, last month. Um, so he is going to continue to serve, um, even more, uh, the school boards across the state. Show them what we are doing here and, um, make it better everywhere. So, um, thank you for continuing to serve in leadership. Um, and for, um, like I said earlier, for setting such a strong foundation for the work we're going to continue to do this year. Is, now is there a motion to adjourn?
I wait the winner.
Okay.
You never get to do that.
It's been moved by Amanda.
You did it, did not.
And seconded by Mary to adjourn tonight's meeting. Um, any discussion? No, hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, everybody agrees, so have a, have a great holiday, everyone. Great break.